It is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. It is 6:30. Calling to order the regular council meeting for the city of Johnstown. Ms. Monroe, if you'd like to call the roll.
Mayor Don Barnard.
Here.
I'm Maryman.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Here.
Charlie Campbell.
Here.
Nicole Schut.
Here.
Abor Cini.
Here.
Ryan Green.
Here.
Okay. I do not see Pastor Andy Fitzpatrick here, so if we could please rise and I'll lead us on vacation. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time that we can gather and work on these matters and try to move the city forward. Lord, we ask you to be with all our first responders, fire and police. Or we ask you to be with all those that work for the city, all the teachers, just everyone in the city. Lord, just please be with them and continue to guide them. Amen. Would you remain standing for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First item is we have action on minutes for the August 1st, 2023 meeting and the August 15th, 2023 minutes. Do I have any questions on either of those meetings? Any changes? Okay, do we have a motion for this as a block or individual?
Motion to block. Pass as a block. Charlie Campbell. Nicole Schut.
Yes.
Abor Cini.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Okay, next, decision comments on matters not on the agenda. The first speaker tonight is Ms. Susan Sorino. I just want to remind you, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Susan Sorino. I am currently a board member on the Greater Johnstown Parks and Rec Board, and I'm the current treasurer this year. Our president, Keith Ryan, is going to give you a little bit of background a little bit when he stands up to speak, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of quick things about where we are and where we see ourselves moving forward. The original board members were appointed, obviously, pre-intel, and we worked for the first several months in focusing our mission and vision. Shortly thereafter, the news of intel came, and it turned the conversations that we were having about the acquisition of land and what our goals were going to be on our heads. Shortly thereafter, our group was thrust into litigation regarding the Miles Estate, which the board or the council knows what's going on with that, and that took a great deal of time, focus, and energy from our fledgling board. But we did our best to try to work towards the goal for our city. And moving forward to build our ability to meet our mission financially, we soon discovered that the 10-year renewal issue that council has been made aware of via our letter not too long ago to you, that that is creating an impediment on our ability to foster what we want to do as our mission and our goals towards the city. Now, what that does is it creates an issue about the timing and how we can put a levy or a bond up for our citizens, asking for funding for, to be able to acquire land, to do programming, and those kinds of things. We want to be clear that we are not thinking about being in any kind of competition with what the city is trying to accomplish, with the tax levy, what the schools might be wanting to put up. We are very much want to be focused on working in cooperation with the city and the schools. We don't want to ask too much of our citizens at one time, so we're being very thoughtful about that. But the bottom line is, is that if the 10-year renewal has not changed, that language has not changed, we're pretty much a defunct board because we're not going to be able to get a request out to the citizens that would be viable. The existence of a joint Parks and Rec District is critical to expanding the reach and development capabilities of the city, meaning the areas outside the city limits. And with the schools, we're trying to assist with the youth sports and take some of that burden off of the facilities that the schools experiencing. We strive, as a board, to be committed to creating a long-term plan in parallel with new or unexpected developments, and plan logically and collaboratively with the schools and the city. Our vision is to foster relationships with Licking Parks to enable some passive recreation alongside what we hope to be the management of our active recreation properties and coordination of programming. We aim to be a conduit for property planning across the boundaries of the school district for parks, including athletic fields, which would include partnerships with JYAA, the schools, and the city, all to enrich our community. Our first objective would be to secure some grass space for field sports and hire a Parks Director to manage space, planning, and coordination with the schools, and JYAA for scheduling and use. We would continue to work with the Pizzuti Group to offer a comprehensive municipal metro parks plan, adding with specific layouts for acquired land, either by gift, development, agreement, lease, or purchase. And if Licking Parks acquires the Miles Estate, we would look to secure a long-term lease with them that would allow us to develop and leverage acreage for active recreation.
Your time is, I'll give you a minute, DeFras.
I'll sum it up.
Okay.
It's been difficult to form a long-term plan beyond some of the topics that I've just mentioned here because of the uncertainty in our ability to financially provide for the purchase or acquisition and management of property or programming. And so we're just simply asking council to please provide us with some direction as to whether or not you seek to continue to foster and support a joint Parks District, or if your plans now just desire a different format. We are volunteers, and we're here to serve with only the betterment of the community in mind. So we're just looking for direction from council and the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Barr.
Might I yield to Mr. Ryan to let him go to follow up with what she had going together, and then I can go after him?
Yes.
Should I ask that, sir?
So you want to use your three minutes for him?
No.
I want my own three minutes after.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
If that's okay with you.
Yep, Keith can go first.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I am the chairperson for the Joint Parks Rec District, Greater Johnstown Parks and Rec. We were established on August 3rd, 2021. The purpose, or at least at that time, to give this particular group of council why it was done, Andy Joseph had asked to donate some land to the community, but in order to do that, he wanted some feasibility to support that park or that recreational area. At that time, we were unable to get everything put together, and that land was sold, so we weren't able to acquire that land. But he also was new to the community and was involved in youth sports and saw the need for green space in particular in our community, and I think that's why I'm involved and a lot of the other people are involved, is we just need green space for our youth in particular. But we're also looking for programs for seniors and programs for adult sports as well, so it's not just the youth sport. But the idea of the group is also to take the funding away from just the residents or the citizens of Johnstown and spread the tax bases to the school district, so the burden of the parks aren't only for the citizens of Johnstown, but for the school district entirely. So we feel like we can do better programming. We feel like the fees or the taxes would be a lot less if we could spread that out and not have that particular tax burden really on all, just those that live within the confines of the city. So I think Susan did a good job as far as, you know, why we're here and what we're doing. I did reach out to Plain Township because I was informed that that's kind of the model that was used to set us up. And so I asked them, were you set up in a 10-year plan as well, or was it more continuous or in perpetuity? Because they do have some substantial bonds and levies in place at this point. And they stated that yes, in the beginning, they were set up that way, and that they had to do basically the same thing we're doing, grow up to their entities, which would be the schools, the city, and the township, was how they were set up, and ask for a resolution to change that so they could get funding in order to basically pay for these services. So that's what we're doing. Again, we're a volunteer group. We definitely see the need in the community for recreational space for all people, not just the youth, and that's why we volunteered on this board. And so we're really kind of leaning towards your direction because it was Jim Leonard and council that formed our group. We didn't form ourselves. So this really comes back to you guys, but now we're asking you, if you want us to be a viable source or group here in Johnstown, this needs to be changed so that we can accomplish our goals. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for taking the time to listen to comments from the public. I just wanted to clarify from last Tuesday evening when I was up here. I did not mean to imply that the planned development that's under consideration, that it have a 40-acre park within that area, but to consider as part of a potential development agreement if the council approves such a development coming into Johnstown, that fees in lieu of, or land somewhere else, as the two Parks and Rec Board members just said, the need of a rectangular, squareish, athletic field space for youth and adults is much needed in our community. I have a picture that after the meeting I'd like to share with you, and if you don't believe the picture, just go up to Johnstown Elementary School where the grade three, four boys and girls play soccer. In front of the Golden Mouths, it's nothing but a hardpan of dirt, and we have our children playing on that. If you were to watch the game last night that I attended, you would see kids falling down, getting their knees hurt, their shoulders hurt, because they're playing on nothing more than clay. It's not an athletic field. It's been cooked in the sun for the past three weeks. So I just wanted to clarify what I meant to say last Tuesday so that there was no ambiguity, that I thought a 40-acre park should go out there. And I do echo the request as a former Parks and Rec Board member, that this council consider removing that 10-year life and take the lead on it so as to lead the city, not waiting for the school board to decide something. I think your leadership is much needed in that. And with 25 years' experience at Parks and Recreation, I do not know of one existing Parks and Recreation District in the state of Ohio that has any kind of, year by year, whether it's five, 10, or even 20 years, and that is straight from Woody Woodward, who's the executive director of the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, and he serves well over 600 members, professional Parks and Recreation members in that. His office lives locally here in Westerville. I encourage you to hear it straight from the horse's mouth rather than mine. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. I know it's a general rule that council doesn't address questions or things from them, that they had no questions, but just as a point to them, I have currently scheduled a meeting with the school board to discuss the greater parks, from the open vacancies to the 10-year life, and hopefully that meeting will be scheduled the next week that we could start discussing their thoughts on it, and the council can discuss what our thoughts on it and move forward. So just to let you know, it's not, it's not being ignored. There's meetings being set up, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Next up is council committee reports. The first is planning the zoning. They met on September 12th. Their next is September 26th, 6:30 in the council chambers. You guys have nothing to report for that meeting?
Yeah, we got a little bit of report for that meeting. Great meeting. We heard the, this was the first point of contact, the application for the Johnstown Company, everything going on down there in that corridor off Green Chapel. If you haven't checked it out yet, we have that on YouTube. You can definitely watch the meeting. I encourage you to come to the next meeting or watch it on YouTube, and feel free to reach out if you have any questions, concerns, criticisms, anything.
Design Review Board will meet on September 26th at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. The next Finance Committee is October 17th at 5:00 PM in the administrative conference room. It is much more fun than zoning, so I encourage people to come to that one. Safety and Services next meeting is October 3rd at 5:00 PM in the administrative conference room. The Events Committee next meeting is 9:20 at 5:30. And the Parks and Recs, their next meeting is October 2nd at 1:00 PM in the administrative conference room. And we need, Rules Committee, we need to get a date set.
We need to.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Director's Report from the Police Chief. He sent all of council there. We've had a chance to look at it. Does council have any questions for the chief tonight on his report? The Finance Director, Mr. Delandy, if you'd like to go over your report.
Good evening, members of council, and thank you. Actually, this is our August snapshot of the financial overview. First page is really just the recap of what our beginning balances were, and the operating funds. Revenues year-to-date, expenditures, unbalanced. Please note, this is on a cash basis. This doesn't have encumbrances that we obviously have.
Can you move the microphone closer to you, please?
I mean, this is a cash basis, and obviously it doesn't include encumbrances. That's on our books for the next couple of months also. Right now, we're above expenditures, so that's a good sign. We go into the revenue side of it on the next page, as far as the general fund, one of those items. Obviously, after eight months, rule of thumb, you're looking at 8/12, so you're looking at about 68% that you want to at least achieve in revenue. And obviously, our funds have, in the general, were about 82%. So our revenue, especially our income taxes, we're seeing about 8% increase year-to-date. Street construction and maintenance, that's operating at about 79% of revenue per budget, based on our budget. And then the sewer, water and sewer, also, they're running right around the 67%, kind of like a guideline as far as where we want to be at eight months. And obviously, we'll be, there's timing differences on revenue and also expenditures as we go through this. As much as the year-to-date expenditures for the general fund, we're actually running at about 51% of our budget, and we're underneath, under the 68%. The streets, we're running at about a 53% of our budget. And again, let me reiterate, we do have encumbrances that aren't reflected in this cash basis document. Water and sewer, and they're all running about 60%, so those are actually forecasting right now at a lower-than-budgeted amount. Obviously, we have four of the big months as far as the encumbrances, and also some of our debt payment coming. Just a quick recap, our income tax collections, for 23, we budgeted 2.7 million. We're pushing 2.2 million. That's about 162,000 over year-to-date of 2022. That's reflecting about an 8% increase, as I noted before. With holdings, as far as the employment withholdings, they're running about a 9.4%. Business net profit, again, these are also include estimated taxes, so they could be just carryover also. That's at 38%, and individuals are running pretty much even compared to 22 and 23. Currently, we're at an 81.4% of our income tax budget. The final page reflects a little bit on our tax top 10 employers, comparing 23 to 22. Our top 10 employers are running about a 7.7% increase over last year, and our top 20 employers, top 10 employers, top 20 employers are running about 11.8% now listed. And we'll be monitoring this. Obviously, this is just a quick snapshot of eight months, and we'll be monitoring this for the next month, throughout the year.
Does anyone in council have any questions for Mr. Delandy? Is it possible in these reports to show what our encumbrances are, what you have, that you know is still to come? That way, we can expect, because I mean, we can see the expenses, say, expenses 1 million, but...
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, as far as like September and October are going to be your two critical months, is when we start going into the budget time. So we'll be gathering those encumbrances and projecting out our projected expenditures for the year also, probably in October for sure, possibly September. But yes, we can, we can include what we have encumbered right now on that sheet also. That would give you a little better basis.
With the, I know this is a dangerous question to ask. We're showing an 8% increase in our income tax this year versus last year, what we've collected so far this year. With that increase, is that enough to hold us over if the income tax ballot initiative does not go through?
Personally?
Yes.
No. I think it'll sustain enough to start next year as far as to move forward possibly, but as far as the growth and stuff that I think, as far as the city's going to have, then the departments and stuff, I think without the increase, I think there's going to be stagnant. Services and stuff, that's me personally.
Is it also possible to get our, and I'm sorry for asking so many questions, the forecast where you see our funds starting off next year? Because I know last year when we started off, it was concerned that they suggested we have four months' worth of expenses in our funds at the beginning of the year to hold us over. Is it possible to get that forecast in the next few months where you anticipate us to be for next year?
I think the next couple of months, as far as with the budgeting process, with the encumbrances, we can start with the encumbrances for next month. Obviously, we have some encumbrances that we need to add for the next couple of months as far as planning and stuff that we're, the city is going into right now. But yes, as far as projecting out some beginning balances, we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for the 17th of October. I would like to be proactive, if we can, on getting more dates on the calendar, and then project out a little further, because I think it's very important that all members of that committee are available. So the sooner that we can get that done.
We can do it in conjunction with the safety and service, so we have it twice a month, if that's what you're looking to do.
Yes, I'm thinking we probably need four- to five-hour session at some point to really get through the budget with a critical eye. So I think, I believe currently it's you, John, and myself are the members, so let's try to get that organized.
Would you be good with that, Dave?
Yeah, we can set them up, even if we go hour to two hours on different funds and stuff as far as with the projections. I think that's going to be, I would definitely recommend for good projections, at least have through September in there, as far as hard numbers and encumbrances, and even possibly October. And I think what's going to drive this whole budget is going to be the election as far as the ballot, and that's going to dictate how this budget is going to...
But even if, even if it passes, we won't see the funds, a large share of the funds until late 2024 to start, to be able to utilize.
Some of your bigger companies, you'll start seeing those, possibly in the second month, with semi-monthly payments with withholdings. As far as individuals and net profit, no. But I think you'll start seeing it probably within February, some of the withholdings coming through.
Let's keep our October date, and then strategize, maybe a two-pronged approach, and figure out how we want to go about it. Because I want to be ready to go beginning of January with, we may have to do two, but if we do them in conjunction with each other, I think we can, we can manage that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to try to help answer one of the questions that you asked in regards to where we'll be at funding-wise next year for our current services, and because we're trending upward on the 8%, does that, does that make it sufficient for the extra expenses that we may have? And I want to tier this into two separate categories. One, it's not necessarily the growth that's going to be the extra increased expenses. So I want to highlight, we have a lot of developments that have went in over the last 15 to 20 years, is the life expectancies of those infrastructures and roads have started to dwindle down. Concorde Crossing, Leafy Dell, all of those are good examples. Developer obviously pays for those roads in the first, you know, swath whenever they go in and put them in. Then after that, it's our responsibility as a city to maintain those. A lot of that development has happened recently over the last 15 to 20 years, and what we're starting to see now is a deficiency in the money that we're collecting to keep up with the infrastructure of these new developments. And I also want to plug that any new development that comes in, the revenue sources that will be generated from these particular developments should have a, should, and you're all's decision and you're working through that particular PD development right now, should have a net zero or a net positive effect, so that we don't have a similar situation that we're dealing with now, where we have development that comes in, and then we don't currently have the mechanisms in place, funding-wise, to maintain the streets. Police services, those will maintain, but I think a lot of what we're seeing is the infrastructure. Obviously, we would love to see more police presence and sometimes have, you know, three officers on duty to be able to overlap on high times, especially if somebody goes on vacation. But just want to highlight that it's not necessarily we're increasing and that we're going to grow, and the growth is going to cause more expenses. The new growth, the way it's being structured should be self-sustaining. It's the old growth that's starting to catch up with us, and there's a big difference between the two, and I just want to highlight that.
Quick question for Jack, because you were talking about the developments. Leafy Dell, has it ever been paved since it's been completed?
Not new pavement.
Repaved, I'm sorry.
Not new pavement. We have sections of those roads done top dressing and resurfacing, like a running course on top, but no, they have not been milled down and repaid.
What about Concorde Crossing?
No, same situation. Certain roads have been picked for new top dressing, but not a milling field.
And just so council's aware, I asked Jack to give us estimates on each of the developments, how much it would cost to redo all the roads in there, so we can start planning in the future for some of these large developments. Kind of like with your house, you know, you know your roof's going to last 20 years. You can budget and prepare for when that's going to go. If we could start preparing for when these roads, so that we're ahead of it and not trying to play catch-up every time with them, so. Yes, sir?
Can you tell me...
Can you tell me what other miscellaneous, it's sixty-seven thousand running right now with an estimated seventy-three. What does that cover? Uh, it's on the year-to-day expenditure. Just curious as to other miscellaneous, what, that's considerable amount of money. I just want to know what you can do with that.
It's on the page with the graph.
Yeah.
Year-to-day expenditures percentage of budget.
Pretty big catch-on.
Okay, that'll be fine. I'm sure it is. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, there's no tabled legislation, so we're going to move forward, public hearings of legislation. The first is Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-seven. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Is this for Dave or?
This would be for Dave.
Mr. Dillandy?
Thank you. This is the annual, accepting the rates and, and the real estate taxes. The inside millage of two-point-three percent. Actually, we will receive three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars from that inside millage. Compared to the last year, we received almost three-sixty. So it's up about twenty-five thousand dollars compared to last year.
And this is our portion of the real estate taxes that we all pay?
Yes. And on average, pretty much, a house would cost two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. That house would pay roughly about a hundred-and-eighty, a hundred-and-ninety thou, dollars of real estate taxes. So that's how much would come back to the city for a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar house, just for an example.
So just so everyone's aware, your real estate taxes, the majority of them go to the county, to the school, and to fire. And the city gets, like you said, a very, very small portion of it, so.
I want to say it's in between two and four percent. And I can look it up real quick to confirm, but I'm...
The inside millage is two-point-three.
There you go. So out of the entirety of the tax bill, that's ours. Aren't you so lucky?
They got us this year already. Their valuations.
Well...
We'll see how that goes.
We'll only get two percent of that.
I know, that's terrible for the citizens we're at.
So today is the day of introduction, public hearing and vote. Does council have any questions on this? Do you have any questions or comments from citizens? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion made, sir.
I'll second.
Shawn Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Shaw.
Yes.
Bob Orsini.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-eight. A resolution amending the appointment for city engineer for the year two thousand twenty-three. And I will turn this over to Mr. Stainer, so he can explain why and what we're doing with this.
Sure. So currently, at the beginning of last year, or I should say at the end of last year, or beginning of this year, we appoint kind of a primary group of engineers or a firm to lead us on our daily activities. We had decided at that time to go with Prime. We'd been with Prime for some time, had a pretty good relationship. I'd still say that relationship is, is positive. But in the course of the last year or so, Prime has, has had quite a bit of turnover, which, uh, which is not uncommon right now with engineering services in any type of walk of life and any type of career path. There's, there's a lot of movement that's happening inside of those fields. Because it's, it's obviously an employee's market to where they can shop and feel what's a good fit for them. So because of that, um, Prime right now, we don't have any familiar faces. Familiarity with the projects that are happening in Johnstown. The staff that they do have are wonderful. They're, they're great, but I think they're, they're in a learning process. Some of them that they're, are bringing on, one of the recent ones does have a little bit more experience. But like I said, I think it's that familiarity that, that we've had with a engineering firm that kind of knows the background of the city over the last couple of years. None of those participants are currently with that firm. As you all are aware, we have quite a bit of projects in the works, development that's being looked at. And we want to make sure that whenever we're doing that, we need somebody that's familiar with the territory, has a lot of stability. And out of the engineering firms that are out there, Prime has probably had a significant amount of turnover. So we did, I did look at a couple other engineering firms. DLZ, met with them, fantastic group. Met with EMHNT, fantastic group. Have had conversations, not, not in a two-hour conversation that I've had with those two entities. But after the, after kind of the vetting process, looking at it, I think EMHNT, based on their qualifications, familiarity with the territory, the, uh, the success that they've had in the central Ohio area, and a lot of it is, is going to be able to be speed to market. We have a lot of things that have happened that if an outside entity that's from another state or from another different region of Ohio doesn't understand how fast things are moving in this area and already have background knowledge, it's going to take them a little bit of time to obtain that. EMHNT brings to the table a tremendous amount of information for our current infrastructure. In their qualifications letter, they mentioned quite a few central Ohio communities. One that they left off, and I'll, I'll put it out there, and I think they left it off strategically, but I'll, I'll just call out the elephant in the room. Yes, they've done work for New Albany. I don't know that that's a bad thing, because they're very familiar with the infrastructure, the roadway systems that are obviously going to butt up to the city of Johnstown. So having some familiarity with the area, knowing what's currently happening, I think is going to produce probably the best result. Knowing that we have a limited amount of time to understand and get all of these things in place, that was the main reason that I chose EMHNT. If it's the council's decision after this year to shop this out again, I'd be more than willing to do so. But at this time, critical decision, we need speed to market. We need somebody that understands it quickly, that has a proven track record in the central Ohio area. EMHNT is, is that firm that I believe can get the task done. And I'll leave it at that, leave you with any questions you may have. And I've got a huge perspective packet that goes along with it. I'll lie, I'll give one other highlight. Usually when you get an individual assigned to your community, they have a collective group that's inside of that office that they could outsource to us. The individual that we're getting is Mike Keller. He's a partner. I specifically asked for it to be Mike, knowing the importance of what's happening in Johnstown. And I also think that they're putting a, a high emphasis on our particular area. So we're not getting the second or third string. This guy's all the way at the top, and he wants to be the main communicating person that deals with the city. Now, he will take it back to the rest of his staff, but you're, you're getting a pretty seasoned veteran when it comes to this type of, of field. So I'll, I'll plug that for Mike. I did put that out there, and he, he said, "I'll, I'll step into that role." And he also understands that this is an area that he needs to put on his radar as of a level of importance, so.
And this is only to finish out two thousand twenty-three, so that we can continue with what we're...
Yes, at the end of the year, at the beginning of next year, we will need to make a decision who our engineering firm will be. And, and this is not an exclusive contract either. So what we did with Prime, we also had the ability to outsource to other engineering firms if we felt the need. So for our water plant, we felt Jacobs Engineering was, was a fantastic fit. And, uh, and water plants and sewer plants are not something EMHNT necessarily puts into their strong wheelhouse. So Jacobs is, is the right team for that. Prime also still under the understanding that if we need them for something, or a one-off project that they, they're maybe a little bit more qualified for, we can pull them in. So this is not an exclusive contract for all work inside the city. That's, that's a nice benefit to us. What this does is it gives us a consultant that's able to come to meetings. I had a meeting today with Ohio EPA. Mike was able to be there. I had a meeting last week from a planning's perspective. Mike was able to be there. EMHNT also works hand-in-glove typically with MKSK, who is our planners. Once again, that familiarity, that consistency, we need some of those stabilities right now with what we're doing. Charlie, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I looked at their, their layer that they wrote, and it seems like different ones have different things. Like Washington Courthouse Consulting Engineers, some are management, some are inspection services, some are plan reviews. Will that all encompass all of that, or are you going to specifically pick out certain things?
So there's a variety of services that they can offer. Really, what we'll do is model kind of a hybrid. Whenever we need them for a specific task, it'll be a specific project, they'll go ahead and bid that in that scope. What the other piece of that will be is if there is kind of some general engineering, and I'll, I'll bring up and feed off of something that you brought up tonight, Donnie, and that was asking Jack to look at the road systems and put together a cost estimate on the plans of how much that would cost. We did that eight to ten years ago, Bob?
Sixteen, fifteen?
Man, you're really dating me here. I think it was ten. I want to say eight, might have been ten.
No, no, two thousand fifteen or sixteen.
Okay, so roughly eight years ago. So we did what was called a TAM project, transportation area management. Taking that inventory of all your roadway systems, understanding how much it would cost to get those up to snuff. So that could be a project that we specifically ask EMHNT to do. As our general consultants on an everyday basis, may be advantageous, because if we're going to bid for OPWC projects or things like that, this would more than likely be the firm. So getting them involved at the beginning of that, that would be a good example of, of what they're going to do in-house. Also, if we have an engineering issue, a culvert breaks down on the roadway, and it's our responsibility. We need to get some engineering on that. We would obviously call them up, and then, like I said, that consultant basis. So it can be as much or as little as you want. It is an hourly basis. So in the contract, there is a, an estimation, if they were to meet on an hourly basis, you know, eight hours per week, it could come out to a said sum, but that's not a, it's not a minimum. It's, it's kind of a projection. So it really determines, much like what we do with our attorney fees. It's on an hourly basis. We call them up for specific things. Some months, we'll have, you know, a lot of projects and a lot of questions. Other times, we may be, we may be a little bit more quiet and, and able to be more self-sufficient, so.
Anybody else have questions on council about this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is probably future, but will they entertain a retainer or a flat fee for services?
It's a great question. I could ask them. I'm su, I'm assuming that it's probably consistent with other contracts that they have with other municipalities in the area, but it would be a question that I could ask them and see if that's something that they would want to do. I do know that we looked at that with our attorneys. Typically, what they'll do is they'll base it on yearly averages. So they, they roll back about three years, and they say, "This is about how much cost you had," and then that's what they'll utilize for their retainer. They don't want to get out over their skis anymore than, we want to obviously not utilize the services and be paying for something that we're not getting, so.
And, and just as a, a question for future, in the past, Jack, when, on a year-to-year basis, did you guys just renew with Prime, or would you go out for bid to look for new engineering? How would that work each year in the past?
We have had multiple engineers over multiple years. Generally, as, as Sean alluded to, it's a working relationship. And over the last few years, no, it did not go out to bid. They had a number of projects that they were finishing up with us, and we liked the work they were doing. And again, it was set up as an hourly basis. There was no guaranteed amount.
Okay.
So, um, Prime's office has got a little thin here due to people leaving. And Sean and I discussed a little bit, we're not getting the service that, that we, the, the people they have there are good. There's just not getting out to us as we need. So it's time to look elsewhere.
Mr. Mayor, are we required to bid it out to our charter?
I don't think we are. We can check into it. I mean, that would be for the beginning of the year.
Right, exactly.
I think for ser, I don't think for services you are, but it's always nice to do it any chance you can get.
We don't have to, correct?
I don't think we have to.
Okay.
Yeah, professional...
So working relationships would, would go farther, much farther than a, a big process?
Professional services, and that's one of the reasons in our charter and in our ordinance is we have the ability for professional services to kind of steer away from that bidding process. I don't think bidding it out is necessarily a bad thing. I will, I will try to put this in a, in a framework that makes sense. You're not bidding out a project.
Right.
You're bidding at an hourly rate. Generally speaking, your hourly rates are going to probably come in relatively the same. So bidding out your relationship or your hourly rate as comparative to a project, a little bit different. If it was a project, which we do, and we always, Jack is, can speak to this with our sewer plant. We just recently went through the, the whole process of, of looking for qualified engineering firms. And then Jack and his team looked at that and said, you know, not necessarily the cheapest, not necessarily the most expensive, but really fit well with what Johnstown was looking to do, most qualified. And it was somebody that, that Jack and Rick and all of them felt like this was, this was the perfect fit for Johnstown. So we have a little bit of discretion in there whenever we're choosing an engineering firm. But like I said, I want to highlight projects, so great question, Nicole. It's, it's more of an hourly rate, so relationships are a big part of it.
Anyone else in council with questions? Mr. Mayor, if you...
If I may, for those of you that are unaware, EMHNT, we had years ago. EM, EMHNT, we sued them over a water tower. We won fifty thousand dollars over, what, a million and a half project? So we lost, you know, a million four on that. They also designed, with the help of the Army Corps of Engineers, they designed our waste treatment facility, which we tore out and started from scratch.
Correct.
With a Swedish, Swedish sand filter. I have no problem with picking an engineering firm, but I think we ought to be bid, and I think I ought to be careful knowing the history of this community with EMHNT. So that's my comment.
Any other citizen comments? Mr. Bar, come up here.
It'll be quick. Working with both DLZ and EMHNT at my employer, I have loved to be pretty knowledgeable, credible, especially DLZ in their roadway, which I know is a big part. That is really their wheelhouse with DLZ. So for what it's worth, my experience of dealing with them heavily in the past and current employer and, uh, uh, road, whether it's design, engineering, road build, et cetera, that is DLZ's strong point. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do we have any recommendations or motions from council? Go ahead.
Does anyone have more information on what Louis was referencing as far as historical? I'm sure we didn't lose one-point-four million because we have a water tower, but, uh, are, are there reservations, are there concerns that we should be made aware of?
Well, um, the, the tower, just to clarify on that, I was hearing that happened. The tower was built thirty-two feet too short. No, sixteen feet too short. So we had to tear down our existing tower because they didn't work in sequence with each other. And I believe it was in nineteen eighty-three was when they did the sewer plant upgrade, if I'm recalling correctly. And it did not function properly. Now, we're talking early eighties, that entire group no longer works there.
So before Ryan was born?
I was going to say, I wondered why I didn't know about this.
They've had a lifetime to change.
I don't know why I didn't know about this, so I know now.
Fortunately, it was not before I was born. I was here working. So, um, yeah, they, they had their situations, and just as I commented earlier, a relationship ran its course, and we moved on from EMHNT all those years ago. The existing water plant that is built now that we're working out of, BBS, built that plant. That relationship ran its course. We moved on to a different engineering firm. And now Jacobs, oddly enough, purchased BBS, and that's, and that's who we're working with. But Louis is exactly right, lawsuits, cleaned it up, there was payments made out. But again, that was forty years ago. And I think you find if you look with any community, they cycle through their engineers. Your relationship lasts so long, you move on to a different engineer. And then you might find, if you're here long enough, twenty, thirty years later, you're, you're working with a, with a different group. But I, I will have to attest, what Louis said is correct and accurate. I was here when it happened. But also, I've worked with Mike Keller on different projects. He is a very good and capable engineer. I think what Sean said was completely right. I think what Sean said was completely right. I think from their plant construction ability and know how they moved out of that field. You don't see them a lot, they are more in development and road building. And that's why when we were choosing to build our water and sewer plant, that if you looked at their RFQs or qualifications, they weren't strong there. They were in more of development building than plant construction, where Jacobs had a very strong background in plant construction. So they specialize in a little bit different things, so.
One question, final question for you. Are you comfortable with them as engineers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr.?
Well, isn't it the Prime, the Prime Group, didn't they miss the curbing issue at Bell Store?
We've had a couple misses.
Yeah.
That have existed over the last couple, probably eight months, maybe a year. And part of that is just communication with them. I don't want to entirely...
I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, I'm just saying, everybody makes their mistakes, correct?
It's a collective effort, and everybody can probably bear some scars on that. But to Jack's point, they got pretty thin, and they're aware of it. And just to so you know, I did call up Prime last week and let him know that this was happening. I never wanted it to be a shock, and I never want to burn a bridge. And, you know, let them know that it could be an opportunity down the road for Johnstown to give them another look. And they will be finishing all the projects that they have started currently with inspections. So I think it's unwise to change captains mid-course in your ship journey. So we've already got Prime doing the inspections over at Concord East Phase. So having a new inspector come in, having a new group, I felt that that was not a good way to go. So they'll be currently finishing out any project that they did the engineering review on, and then any inspections and taking that all the way across the finish line. Any new projects that we have coming in, this group will be evaluating and looking at those.
And I want to agree with what Sean said there as far as Concord East, because they are the ones that reviewed the specs. They know the material that's supposed to go in there, where a new engineer coming in would have to play catch-up all around that. So I think it's the right thing to do, and our relationship with Prime is not completely severed, I want to stress that. It's just they had a lot of turnover, and a lot of the staff that Johnstown counted on to work is with, are with other engineering firms right now, and the new staff just wasn't able to keep pace with what we're currently doing. So I do want to echo what Sean says, it's not that they're a bad firm, but their knowledge of what we were doing went to other firms, and it's time to have more stability right now.
Any other questions?
Only thing I have on this, I mean, we saw the presentations last year when we were looking at our comprehensive plan. We saw a number of engineering firms come in here. Obviously, it looks like a pretty collaborative profession, where you're going to have people subbing people out and working with each other in their specialty. It seems like there was some of that going around, where, you know, MKSK would bring in two different firms, so it seems collaborative. I don't mind it being to close out the year. I do like that, you know, we can still bid out other specific projects to other firms. But I don't think it would hurt in the beginning of next year to take a look at some different firms and see where people are at.
And do you want those firms to present to council, or is it internally where Jack and I would?
It might just be something to do internally, it might be something to do in a committee. Just take a look at some different options and meet, you know, meet some different firms. I know there's a number of them out there, I don't think it's a bad idea to shop when you can, and I think this is an opportunity to shop.
Well, the key that we have always done is we make sure our city engineering firm contracts do not make them exclusive, because many firms have, are strong in one profession or one group, and there's a different engineering firm that's very strong in another group. So as long as we don't make our contracts exclusive, I think it leaves the door for us to work with different engineers during different projects.
Yeah, and I think we even saw last year, there was one firm that was going to bring a gentleman in that was from a firm that was also interviewing because he was a specialist with ODOT. So I think you're going to see that kind of thing with this.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion on Resolution 2023-28?
I make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2023-28 as written.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Monroe?
Nicole Schuck?
Yes.
Bob Orthing?
Yes.
Chair Barnard?
Yes.
Ryan Green?
Yes.
Sharon Hendren?
Yes.
Charlie Kim?
Yes.
Okay, interesting one tonight, Resolution 2023-29. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding with the Village of Alexandria and the Village of Granville for the planning, development, and provision of water and wastewater services, and additionally authorizes the city manager into an agreement for a right of first refusal.
Mr. Stater?
Let me unpack this one. All right, so in your packets, you should see two attachments. And I want to go through each of them separately because they are two separate attachments. But we tried to kind of collaborate and put them into one resolution because they are somewhat related, but not specifically in all instances. So the memorandum of understanding, what this is, and I've given you guys some background over the last couple of months, is a, not necessarily a binding contract by any means, but it is what it is. It's a memorandum of understanding, an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Cooperation is the highlighted word. So what this is leaning into is Granville, Alexandria, and Johnstown agreeing that we feel that together we are stronger when it comes to a regional approach to providing water and sewer services to the northern, western piece of Licking County. That's really Phase 1. We've also had conversations with the city of Newark, possibly the Phase 2, and starting to build infrastructure and system that will service a greater part of Licking County. I want to really, really, really highlight this piece. This is not a situation where if this would start to happen, that we are running pipes anywhere and everywhere. The template that we are looking at, specifically in collaboration with the townships, takes into account their comprehensive plans, our comprehensive plans. And if we were to get into an agreement with these townships, it specifically states where they want water and sewer lines. We are not driving their development in anywhere that they don't specifically see that is consistent with their residents' intent. That is the opposite of what we want to do. We want to listen to those residents. We want to listen to the townships and say, where do you want development? Where do you not want development? Do you not want development at all? Those are all your options, and you as a township should get to decide those things. Not without saying, there is areas that are obviously close in proximity to all those jurisdictions, such as Johnstown, Granville, Alexandria, any municipality amongst Licking County that if a land is purchased and that landholder wants to annex into that respective municipality, that's a different conversation. But it still has to be consistent with that municipality's land use plans, which goes along with those residents' desires. So that's why I want to highlight, this is not just Johnstown running water lines anywhere and everywhere. It's a very different approach. We want to make sure that the resources that we're utilizing and the planning that we're utilizing is consistent. That way, we're not having an expense of running to nowhere and then burdening anyone with any cost. So memorandum of understanding is the first step in that. It's simply a nod to all of the agreed parties. Alexandria is looking at this tonight as well, looking to pass it. Now, their meeting starts at 7:00, so at the end of this evening, we should know whether they're passing it. Granville is also putting this before their respective council to look at. Like I said, this is not binding, this is simply a nod, a public kind of affirmation that we all want to work together, realizing that there's a great deal of efficiencies that can be created through these entities. That's the first piece. The second piece, a little bit more specific, it's a right of first refusal. What that does, specifically with one plant, and specific in that is the water, I'm sorry, the sewer plant down in Alexandria. If Alexandria is given an offer to purchase their plant by an outside party, what this does is it gives Johnstown and Granville together, or individually, the ability to have right of first refusal. So before that they could sign that contract with whoever presented that offer, we would have the ability to make an additional offer before then, before they could accept. Now, after we make our offer, then they get to make a decision which they feel would be best for their particular entity. So they are a little bit separate, but because of what we're doing with the memorandum of understanding, it's kind of written inside of this document, to have that first right of refusal. And just for fun facts, I got an email today, surprisingly, as if no one knew, maybe we did know. Southwest Licking did give an offer to the city of Alexandria for the purchase of their sewer plant. So those two agenda items will be on their council tonight. So just for a way of, do you think it will happen? Well, yeah, I do, because it's happening right now. Just got that email today, so.
One thing I would like to say to the audience and those watching, because Sean said it in a much more politically correct way. This is Johnstown, Alexandria, and Granville having a say in their destiny, controlling what happens in their school district area, and not allowing an overreaching development that we can't handle and don't want. It secures our borders better for our school district. Granville, what they want to do with their overall townships and everything else, and also Alexandria. So this is an overreaching plan, or a huge plan for the future, to give the townships a regional partner that they can work with versus for-profit water companies being forced into their laps, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I am confused. A council member from Alexandria, I won't say who, reached out and said, vote against it. They weren't for it. The council?
I can tell you that I had a phone call with Jim Jasper today. He's had great conversations, he sent out a letter to council in Alexandria, knowing, letting them know everything that's been going on. This is not a document that was drafted over the last week. These conversations have existed over the last six months, at the very least. They really got energized whenever the agreement was made at the commissioner level for particular service areas in different townships. So the feedback that I got from Mayor Jasper was that he sent out kind of an informational letter to all the council members, asked any of them to reach out, and he received word back, confirmation that they were in agreement, that this was a good move in the right direction. So I can't speak for that specific council member, and you spoke to them directly. So maybe they have some concerns, and hopefully Jim will be able to walk through those concerns tonight. This is not Johnstown going down and purchasing it, it's simply a right of first refusal. The memorandum of understanding is simply a nod, it's not a binding contract. It's saying, hey, we're generally going to work together to try to solve our water and sewer needs of the specific area. So I would encourage anybody that is in Alexandria that has questions to ask their representative, the mayor. I connected with Jim and I said, anything you need from us, let us know. Herb, city manager, village manager at Granville, also communicated that. This is a collective effort. The new, potentially new mayor, Sean Barnes, met with us today when we met with the EPA. So there's a tremendous level of transparency that's happening between all of these agencies and all of these entities, and trying to collaborate and work together to see what's best for those citizens, and to the mayor's point. This is a different model than what's maybe been done before. This is listening to what each individual township and each individual community wants. It's not a one-size-fits-all kind of plan, it's an individualized agreement that speaks specifically to the residents of that specific area. So if Alexandria does have a concern, rightfully so, they should be able to vent and air those concerns and say, hey, this is something that I'm not comfortable with. And in the documents that we're presenting, that gives them the opportunity to have a say in their water and in their sewer conversations to where outside parties that operate differently may not necessarily be interested in their voice and what they have to say as far as development goes. I'll leave it at that.
I knew you met with, had a meeting yesterday, or what did the township, do they, are they in agreement, or?
So good feedback from the township. Like I said, this is a, this was a level of transparency and collaboration. So I would say at that meeting, everyone feels a lot more comfortable whenever they know that they're all sitting at the table and we're all working through this together. I think it's the ability for everyone's voice to be heard. They obviously want to represent the township constituents to the best of their ability. And if they're shut out, then obviously they can't connect with us. So we're reaching out to them, we're saying, what's important to you, what's an area that we can help? And as I put out there before, how the heck can we work together and not fight amongst ourselves? You're going to get a heck of a lot done more if you're in lockstep. Now, there's going to be areas where you don't always agree. But if you're working together, you're going to get a lot more accomplished than if you're fighting amongst each other. And it does not benefit the community when we're all fighting amongst each other. I don't think that's how we want to go, that's not how this is modeled. We want to collaborate, and we want to be consistent in our plan with all of the townships and all of the municipalities. So this is, this is an entry level into that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sharon, did they give you any specific reasons, under normal circumstances?
I don't want to go into it too much, because...
If you want to have voice for or against, sometimes they come to the meeting, being a council member in a neighboring community, they have their own meeting tonight. But if they didn't give specific reasons, it's hard for me to give it any weight whatsoever.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I think I missed, I mean, we're definitely, we're definitely out ahead of this, I give you credit for being out ahead of it. But I think there's a lot of information to consider here, because we're going down a road where you start to get obligated potentially to things and costs. And we're trying to do a lot right now within our own city, and you're getting obligated into costs in other cities. We have a water treatment plant in Alexandria that's definitely got some age to it, definitely some costs there, some of that there. I think you have to go through other townships, and we don't 100% know where these other townships are at. I think there's a lot to be considered there, I think we're early on this, so I don't know that it's necessarily the right road to go down yet. We have to know what kind of costs we're obligated to, we have to know what relationships, partnerships we're related to. I think with Alexandria and the township there, I don't know if it's on the ballot, but they were looking at consolidating at one point. You don't necessarily know who's going to be on city council in Alexandria come January, looks like they're losing a mayor. So I think there's a lot to consider on that before you go down that road, I think we're just early on it. I think there's a lot of questions to be answered on there as far as what we're committing to by going down this road.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I agree, Ryan, I think we're early, but I see a different perspective. I see, I don't see any obligation, I see potential for obligation down the road. I think this is positioning and maneuvering to put us in the best position to make a decision when the time comes. If assets are acquired by an outside company in the water and sewer area, arena, that's going to make it much more difficult for us to have stopgaps to prevent intrusion or inclusion of services into areas that we may or may not want. When I read through this, I don't see us obligated to anything. Now, if it comes to the point where we do have to do that first right of refusal, that's when the diligence, which I think is absolutely appropriate, that you brought up.
Yeah, I just have a hard time voting on something that's taking us down the road without knowing what I'm committing to.
All you're committing to right now is, this is the first right of refusal.
So the memorandum also speaks to me that we're signaling to the state, to the county, that there's a group of people here willing to work together. There's advantages to having municipally-driven services versus, I don't think they're for profit, I think they are technically a nonprofit, but a different organization for water and sewer services. I think that's, it's a good signaling here that there's collaboration. To the state for funding and anything else that may come down the road. Now, the agreement, I think, was intentionally in a defensive position so that if the community or the council of Alexandria says, yes, we want to partner with these people, then when everything lays out at their meeting, they're not making a decision yes or no for X amount of dollars. They're making a decision that, hey, we have another opportunity, let's see where that goes. That's how I read it, the intent that I see behind it. But diligence and, you know, soft pedal, soft footing forward is very critical. is very critical in this, because we don't want to get obligated to assets we can't use. We have to be critical, be careful with the money that's spent.
Yeah, we have to identify funding. There's a lot of things we have to identify, and we have a lot of projects currently we're trying to do here in our city before we get extended into townships and other cities.
We have to be both proactive and reactive at the same time. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the development's coming in such a way that if we only focus on one, we're going to miss opportunities down the road with the other, I think.
I reiterate, too, that I think it's a great strategy to be getting ahead of this. There's no obligation. There's no money obligation right now that comes when the right of refusal would ever be put into place, correct?
That's the way this reads to me. I don't see any obligation here. It just says, hey, if they agree to this agreement, if the city of Alexandria, village of Alexandria agrees to this agreement, and someone makes an offer, they have to come to us and have us say no to that number or however that moves forward, but it puts us in the conversation. We can't be excluded from the conversation.
Anybody else?
But that doesn't mean as an open checkbook from where I sit either. I'm with you there.
Mr. Campbell?
You said that Southwest Licking offered them, has sent them a bid already.
Correct.
So, with them getting, are they going to act on that tonight? Do you know?
I have no idea.
You know what I'm getting at, is if they're going to act on it tonight, now that puts us in that position of financial problems, because we're going to say we want a right of first refusal. They've already done something with this.
Depends on the order. If they accept it, this becomes moot.
Right, it becomes moot. That's correct. You know, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. So, you know, we'd like to know what they're going to do. You know, if they're going to say we're going to table it and see what we might do, I think that would be in our best interest. But I'm not sure that if they would go ahead and make a decision tonight, how that, you know, I guess I would have to say they probably won't accept it on our end. I mean, if they accept Southwest Licking, then our whole process is done.
Our first right of refusal would be done. Doesn't necessarily exclude them from still being a participant in the municipalities. It takes away some of the strength of their position, because they don't have a sewer plant at that point, and the water and sewer infrastructure in that particular area. But it still doesn't, on a legal standpoint, nothing that they do tonight would harm us or legally hold us to any expense, because as Bob so greatly put it, it's really getting a framework in order. If you try to, if you wait too long, and their actions and things are already in motion, you're trying to cobble something together in warp speed, and it's not going to happen. If you've read any of the papers, I mean, they are marching in their direction. So, if we're not marching in a direction, we are falling further behind each day. And I do want to point out the concern with the projects and the things that we have going on. I'm not sure that this would add a cost to the city. Really, what we're looking to do is save money for the residents. There's efficiencies in scale. There's a tremendous amount of strength by being able to share some of the burden amongst three jurisdictions, maybe only two at the beginning. But whenever you go to build a water plant, generally, the larger you build it, the cheaper the water is per the gallon. So, there's inefficiencies in scale. So, if we start to partner together collectively, these projects that we have here, we are scaling them in a way that allows us to do what we need to do for the particular annexed areas, not get too far out financially over our skis, but then have the ability to pivot and also move towards a regionalized plan that, like I said, economies of scale are going to be much more cost-effective to operate and to provide the services, not just for us, but for the area. I mean, if you look at Columbus, Newark, their water rates are lower, because obviously they're spreading that cost amongst a greater number of constituents. So, that's the general idea, is not to burden our residents with more expensive cost, starting to partner with other entities in our area. So, aging sewer plant, that was a concern that we had. That would obviously have to be something that we would vet through in that right of first refusal. We have started to do some investigations there.
It has debt on it, too.
It does have debt. They've been paying on that for quite some time, which is one of the reasons they're looking to unload that and unburden that. Again, that efficiencies and economies of scale. As far as operations go at that particular sewer plant, I will lean to the individual that probably knows that plant inside and out and happens to be sitting in our room. That's Jack. And I did ask Jack the current status of that plant, and I'll let him speak for that and not put words in his mouth, but he can give you online right now or wait till later if you have questions. But if you want a good inventory of that plant, Jack can give you probably a good analysis.
That plant is 18 years old, but it is in above-average shape. Tankage is all good. Pumps are pumps. Pumps run so many hours, you replace pumps. We got that at our existing sewer plant. But overall, that plant is well above-average condition. The distribution system has its share of problems, and, you know, those would have to be addressed with or whoever would take that system over. But the plant itself is operational. It's about 50% capacity, the way it currently sits. The original design was to double its capacity on-site. You could pivot and make that plant larger if you wanted to, because you are in a good section of the stream there to discharge. One of the limiting factors that we have here in Johnstown, which we've worked through, is we are at the headwaters here. The stream's a little smaller in our area than it is down there. Then, obviously, you get to the Norquay's Water Plant, you have the Licking River. So, it's, you know, those are all scales right there. But as far as the plant goes, it's in good operational shape.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate all the information. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. So, I'd like to call this to vote.
Do we do public comment first?
I'll skip that part.
Any comments from the citizens? Mr. Maine?
I don't have comments.
We've missed you the last one.
I will have to say that this is something that I advocated in 1985, but the county commissioners turned it down. I've not heard anything about the county commissioners allowing us to do anything in those counties. The county commissioners turned us down even our water lines within our own township. So, are they going to allow expansion outside this township? Number one question. Number two, there could be four new vases up here come January 1. What commitment are you making for this city that those people that are making the commitment aren't here? And Jim Jasper has already said publicly, he will not be the mayor January 2. Then we get into cost. We borrowed, we bonded $2.9 million to run water line down to 310. County commissioner said, "No." To do any engineering costs, to do any survey, to do anything other than look at a piece of paper, where's the money coming from? Where is this year, next year, and before? You know, the other communities are going to be wanting to know what's the cost going to be to me. And to get that cost, it's engineering. All I have to say. That's premature.
Can I say something, please? I'm sorry. I just have to get this off my chest. I am really, I get frustrated at the fact that I've had, in the last four months or three months, had to hear council members and constituents say, advocate basically for kicking the can down the road. And either we, I know that some of us were appointed up here, and I know that council is going to be new in January, but either we're going to do our jobs for the rest of this time, or we're going to keep kicking the can down the road. And I think it's time to stop kicking the can down the road. We were appointed. Some of us were elected, but we are a full council, and we need to make decisions today, tomorrow, until December 31. Okay? So, I just want to get that off my chest, because I've heard it from about everybody. Okay? So, let's make a decision.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments tonight? Hearing none, do we have a motion on this item? I'll make a motion that we move forward with Resolution 2023-29.
I will second it.
Yes.
Mayor Barna?
Yes.
Ryan Green?
No.
Sharon Hendren?
No.
Charlie Campbell?
No.
Nicole Shuck?
Yes.
Motion does not pass.
It does. At this time, I'm just going to take a moment to interject. The heaviness of this is pretty intense. If you have questions, let me know now, because I'm sitting in a meeting with EPA today, and they are listening to what we have to say. They intentionally called last Friday about this concept paper and this plan. Met with them for two and a half hours in our office with Granville, Alexandria engineers. They didn't come here upon our request. They came here because they're interested in what we're doing and want to be supportive. You're signaling that you're not okay with this, or at least, this is not a binding contract. This is only a nod, a signaling, as council member Orsini put it. If you're signaling that this is not the direction that you want to move, then I can call up Southwest Licking tomorrow, and I can get an agreement, and they can start running water in your township and in your city and everywhere else, because that is what will happen. And I am getting a little intense on this, but I think there is a huge level of weight that goes along with this. If you have questions, please ask. You're signaling to the state of Ohio that this is not the direction that you want to go. As far as funding goes, the Department of Development director has sat in on these meetings. Literally just today, conversations, they are looking to fund opportunities in this area. What they are looking for is a regional plan. Herb Kohler, village manager at Granville, asked them if this meets the definition of a regional plan. Yes. There was no, there was no maybe. It was a yes. This meets the definition of a regional plan. I'm curious as to what your hesitations are. If I can answer those, please let me know. The fact that this does not pass tonight...
This hands the keys to Southwest Licking.
You are turning over your area to Southwest Licking to run water and sewer lines throughout the township. They've already got an agreement with the commissioners. Now, to speak to Louis, Maine's point, we have met with the commissioners. Herb Kohler and myself went down, gave him the concept paper, and it was with one of the commissioners, and it has been circulated to a minimum of two of the commissioners. They are aware of what we're doing. What we asked them was, "If we start this process, are you going to stand in the way of the progress of what we're doing here?" And the answer from one of the commissioners was, "No. We want to do what's best for the constituents. We want the constituents and the residents of those areas to do what they feel is best for them." So, no, they are not going to be a roadblock. Obviously, they've made legal agreements. Those things in a conversation with the EPA today is being analyzed to how those agreements can be reworked. So, even the EPA is a part of these conversations. Sorry to go on a rant, but if you have questions, ask. This is not a binding agreement. This does not obligate you to anything. It's just a signalization that you want to lean in to having this possible, possible regional cooperation. Like I said, if you don't, let me know. I can be done with all of this. Your water plant will be at 6 million gallons, and that's, if you're lucky, we're currently rated for three. For economies of scale, New Albany International Business Park has 15 million gallons of water outside of Intel. So, if you want to have an economic employment center that you are annexing, or that you are making these contractual obligations, whether it be through a JED, and you're collecting revenue through these employers for the city of Johnstown to unburden the residents of this town, you are going to need more than 3 million gallons of water. You are going to need a collaborative plan. We don't have the source water here. I'm literally laying it all out there. You will be beholden to someone else to steer your destiny, and I'll stop at that.
Well, I do not want to sell out to Southwest Licking, so I will change my vote.
You have to make a motion to...
We have to go through the process correctly to do that. Here's the thing with this. There's a lot of information and conversations that are already happening, obviously, that not everybody on council is privy to. Otherwise, we'd have a better handle on some of this stuff.
We've had executive sessions that covered this, Ryan, so I don't know what you're talking about.
So, here's the thing. So...
You're either going to have faith in your city manager, or you don't. Okay? Obviously, we know you don't. Okay? And so, I'm just saying that we don't have to be privy to everything here. Okay? I think he made a good statement.
If we're going to vote on it, and we're going to come in and say...
I think he made a pretty good one there.
Both of you stop. Ms. Hendren, you had...
I'm telling you.
Ms. Hendren, would you like to make a statement?
Just what I said. I will go ahead and reconsider.
What's the procedure, Ms. Monroe?
Someone on the prevailing side of the vote, which is someone who voted no. So, Ms. Hendren, if you want to change your vote, you would ask for a motion to reconsider.
I make a motion to reconsider my vote.
To reconsider.
Reconsider the vote, and then we would vote again.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bob Orsini?
Yes.
Mayor Barna?
Yes.
Ryan Green?
No.
Sharon Hendren?
Yes.
Charlie Campbell?
I'm going to change my vote, only because it isn't going to be any obligation other than to get us started down that road and see where it goes.
Absolutely.
Like that there. As long as it's not, you know, right now, it surely is going to cost us money somewhere down that road. I understand all that. I just, I just want to, if we have an opportunity to maybe expand our horizons, it might be a better idea to try.
It sounds like these conversations are already happening.
Right now, it's a vote.
I'm telling you. It sounds like these conversations were already happening, so...
Mr. Campbell, your vote is?
Yes.
Okay.
Nicole Shuck?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would like to remind council that we have rules. We're going to abide by those rules. We are not going to raise our voices when we disagree. We can have legitimate discussions and disagreements, and that is the way we need to act and behave. We are leaders of the city, and we need to act that way. We are moving on now to Resolution 2023, or Ordinance 17-2023, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 351-13 of the City of Johnstown Codified Ordinances. Would you like to explain this one, Mr. Snyder?
I'll try to put some oxygen back in the room after that tense moment. I apologize for probably leading the charge and getting a little animated, but I appreciate council relooking at that, and I will do everything I can to continue to give you as much information as possible. But moving on to this particular ordinance, this one was brought up through, and make sure I've got the right one. Take a moment to catch up. Through Safety and Service, an incident arose where a resident was parking alongside of a street that didn't necessarily have the whip for that to happen, and our zoning inspector called it out, as well as our chief of police. And in order to be able to enforce the non-parking on that particular street, we needed to go back to our ordinance, and our ordinance had some deficiencies in it, so it obviously went to Safety and Service. We identified not only that street, but a couple additional streets, and came up with a new list and some new wording inside of our ordinances that would hopefully alleviate, for the most part, some of these parking issues that are amongst College Street, John Street, Hyatt, and then I think there was another provision, roadways of College Street and Main to Williams on Section C. So, if there is any questions, I can answer those, or Safety and Service Committee can try to highlight those. This was, like I said, vetted through Safety and Service. It was a three-to-o vote through that particular committee pretty boilerplate.
Today's date of introduction, there will be no public hearing on this. Any questions on council before we move forward? Hearing none, we'll move to Ordinance 18-2023, and Ordinance Amending Chapters 1155, 1167, and 1169 of the City of Johnstown Codified Ordinances. Goes back to you, Mr. Snyder.
So, last council meeting, there was a lot of discussion on transient and hotels. Hearing your recommendation, took it back to the offices and started to look at how to remove the transient and... and started to look at how to remove the transient and hotel. Well, add, we had the opportunity to reevaluate that. It was present in two other areas of our particular code. My assumption is, is if you don't want it in one area, you don't want it in any areas. So identifying those particular areas, uh, we've identified some in Village Commercial, uh, as well as, uh, Village Center. So not to be confused with VC versus Village Commercial. Taking that opportunity, also wanting to not just do a one kind of trick with it, there are some areas in GCC 1 to possibly clean up, up to you all. We currently have, uh, some event spaces that exist in the downtown area. Uh, I don't know that that's inconsistent with your desires, but in order to make those a non-conforming use, inserting those into an allowable use, also looking at ice cream parlors, bagels, delicatessence. And honestly, just for full transparency, I took a lot of the wording that's here, uh, that's been added from our Village Commercial District that, uh, that was already in place, and, uh, and folded it into this particular area. If there is ones that you would like to see added additionally, please let me know. But, uh, this hopefully cleans up some of those non-conforming uses that have existed in the past. Restaurants, for clarity, maybe they don't, maybe they don't necessarily constitute a coffee shop, so we wanted to specifically call out a coffee shop, cuz that seems to be consistent with the, the goals of the downtown area. So not wanting to be confused. Like I said, a lot of this is just housekeeping. Open any recommendations or concerns you have. Other than that, the one I did wanna call out is theaters. That is currently in GCC 1. If you want that to be scratched as well, let me know. Uh, you don't have to decide now, but you can think about it. If you did put theaters in there, I would probably, probably unprobable that a large movie complex would come into GCC 1. But you can put a square footage requirement on that, much like what we also inserted here. Restail stores, you'll notice on Section B, not more than 10,000 square feet. What this, what this does is, it, uh, it prevents a big grocery store or retail store from existing in your downtown. I don't think that's consistent with what you want. I would say if it's a small little theater, uh, go back to the Dorsey Theater days. Uh, I wasn't around, but it sounds romantic and, and all the things that existed of a small town. I think if that's something you have in mind, great. But, uh, if you wanna put that 10,000 square feet parameter on that as well, that may prevent, uh, the Movieplex and AMC's of the world from coming into the GCC 1 district.
I have a question. The theaters, um, does that, would that exclude, um, if we took theaters out, would that exclude an amphitheater?
No, amphitheater would be separate. Uh, you'll also notice in here, uh, a provision that allows a little bit more, maybe I left them, uh, maybe I didn't, so I apologize ahead. There was a provision for post offices and museums and things like that, governmental buildings and things. So that would more or less fall into that. Community facilities, there it is. Uh, nine community facilities, such as government office, post office, libraries, museums, private schools, public parks, and similar uses. So that would fall into that category in my mind, amphitheater being in conjunction with a, a public park, uh, or a library or a museum. And that's also been something that's been added, just from the general discussion that I've heard from you all. An emphasis on parks, I'm looking for Jeff, but he's left the building. Trying to get a win out of that. Uh, so, uh, parks are something that I think you wanna lean into in that particular area. And then obviously, we've got some, some preschools that exist down there as well. Uh, having that added to this allows for them to operate in a, in a conforming manner and, uh, and not having them be in a non-conforming. Uh, conditional uses, we did add a couple there. Parking lots, standalone parking lots in conjunction with other permitted uses. That kinda speaks to the desire to realize that parking could be an issue, and if necessary, uh, you could have some parking ouse. Let's see, bed and breakfast, I definitely wanna highlight that. As a conditional use, there was some conversation last week about the transient. Uh, bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast establishment with a resident, manager, owner, providing eight or fewer guest units. So we at one time had a bed and breakfast, uh, on Main Street. Bed and breakfast is, is different than a transient. Um, you could even put in here the wording that it has to be owner, uh, has to be the resident. It says manager, but you could probably scratch that with a resident owner, to where it has to be the owner of the house being present, uh, for a bed and breakfast to exist. So if that's consistent with something that you would wanna see allowed, I know there's been a lot of conversation with the ability for bed and breakfast to operate, but not necessarily a transient. And, uh, if there's any traction there, let me know. If you want me to alter that, to take out the manager piece, I can do that as well.
Any other comment from council? This is just the introduction, so we will have public hearing next session.
Yeah. Tracy, could you review page 54, uh, C and down? Looks like some of our numbering, with the changes, got a little bit out of whack. It's just purely a. Uh, page 54, go to C, personal services, 1, 2, 3, 2, 3, 4, 5. No 6, but there is a 6. It just, it just needs a little bit, a little bit of cleaning up, that's all.
Anyone else?
Um, on the 10,000 square feet, what is our largest store down there right now?
Interesting.
Does anybody know?
Uh, it's probably.
Bell Store?
Show?
Would be my guess.
Well, Bell's, yeah. Bell's big.
I'd say Bell's is in a footprint scale of a singular building.
Yeah.
You could collectively take, I know the White Cross Lodge building is, is rather large, upstairs and downstairs, but it's, it's, uh, it's actually three units, kind of collectively cobbled together. But I think individually sized structure would be, probably the Bell Store would be my guess. I could look up and find out.
I just wanna make sure we're staying consistent.
I wouldn't be opposed if, if a multiple stor- story building, say it had 5, 5, and 5, were all the same store, right?
Yeah.
Right.
You know, so should we add something or not to exceed existing space? Or somehow say, you know, if you've ever been to Rocky Boots, I mean, you just, you just keep going up the floors, right? It's one building.
Right.
It doesn't, it fits.
Yeah.
So instead, you know, maybe take that limit out of there somehow, or rewordsmith that up a little bit to say. I, I don't know how you do without exposing yourself to potential bulldozing of houses, so.
Right. No. Uh, for context, I think CVS is about 10,000 square feet.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, on, um, I guess it would be, yeah, A, capital A, Section 4, barber and beauty shops have no more than three workstations. I don't think that's appropriate. Three workstations for a barber shop, or three workstations for a beauty salon, I don't think they'll make any money if you don't give them a little bit more space.
I agree.
Okay.
Does that include, um, does that also include, um, like a barber or beauty shop? Does that include, um, stations that could be rented out, space rented out?
Yeah, it could be any of them, right?
I don't know what would be a number, I can't tell you.
Like, like one of those.
I don't know, I don't go to barber shops, yeah. Well, if you, if you go to.
It's just not stated in here.
Yeah, they rent like a.
They rent the booth, it's a booth rental.
Yeah.
There's a half dozen people on one side, so. Maybe, maybe we look at that one too, to see if we could make that more workable.
And then obviously, with hotels and transient accommodations being struck, um, we will have several non-conforming uses down there in operation. Just to call attention to that, so they, they'll be able to operate, they'll be grandfathered in, but if they ever go to sell them.
You are correct.
They will not be able to be conveyed, so. Just to keep that on your radar, but then we're gonna allow a bed and breakfast situation, so. So we're doing one, one type, but not the other, and they're not gonna be able to, to be in operation if they get sold.
Also, I have a question with that same. So, um, A, you have hotel motel facilities, hotels, motels, and other boarding facilities, including bed and breakfast, as not otherwise noted in this section. And then down on F, you have hotels and transient accommodations scratched out. Could we be clear about what the difference is between the hotels and transient accommodations being scratched out, but allowing A to, the hotel and motel facilities to stay in there?
Where are you at, I'm sorry, Nicole?
I'm on the last page, I'm on 56. And the top of that is, um, Section A has hotel motel facilities, and then hotels, motels, and other boarding facilities. And then, um, F is crossed out, which contains hotels and transient accommodations. I wanted to know the difference of why one was stated and one was crossed out.
You were not wrong. And that's a great catch. Uh, that's conditional use, and that's in Section 1169, which I think is Village Center. So I'm not sure, literally what I did was, this is copying the code that we have in place. Uh, I caught the bottom one, but, uh, hotel and motel facilities, hotel motels and other boarding facilities, I would also concur that that would need to be scratched. And then you wouldn't need to have the wording of bed and breakfast in there, unless you wanted to in the Village Commercial area. My hope is to someday have a little bit more consistency between the Village Commercial, Village Center, and GCC 1. Cuz I think the intended purpose is all for them, but they were cobbled together in different stages of petitions and requests that came along the way. It was a Band-Aid, and so eventually, we probably need to have all of those consistent, uh, across the board, so.
Anybody else?
Explain to me what a boarding facility is. I can tell you from. I can tell you what boarding facilities are, and they surely don't want one like you. I'll tell you that right now.
Enter the PG 13. So, uh, I would agree, that's probably not something you want. I have been looking at boarding, as well as hotel accommodations. City of New Concord, or I'm sorry, Village of New Concord, over yonder near.
Muskingham.
Muskingham, uh, has had a similar situation with colleges, uh, and residents. And now they're trying to navigate away from that. So they have an extensive definition list, uh, so copying and pasting off of them, and, uh, and trying to find some other wording out there. Something that I have teed up, uh, boarding, uh, dormitories is another one that I think you want to identify and probably look into some restrictions on this specific area, because I think there is gonna be the opportunity for dormitories or boarding homes with construction workers that we're going to see in this area. So like I said, one of those things I'd like to get to. I've got all the definitions, got it halfway there, just haven't got it across the finish line yet. And I wanna get MKSK's input and, and take on that. I did get, get this over to Trevor. Uh, he had no comments, uh, to give to this at the time. So, uh, the one that, that I do wanna find, I wanna answer Charlie's questions about the barber shop. Can you specifically call out?
I'll tell you where it was. Number four on page 54, under C. 4, 6, 4, 6, depending on how you count.
4, 6, okay. That one was actually one that currently exists, so that's one that you wanna alter. That is currently on the codified ordinances. If your recommendation, do you have a number in mind that I can change it to for the next meeting?
No, I don't.
It would have to be proportional square footage, right?
Yeah.
There'd have to be a little, can we send this back to zoning? Or, I mean, zoning's awful busy.
You, you can, they are busy.
We're a little bit busy the next couple weeks.
The transient piece was something you wanted to get across the finish line. Like I said, that was already in the code, so.
Normally, I'm like, yes, send it to zoning, but not.
If it's not a fire for that workstation thing, I think we just let it ride. And then when we do the full review, you know, if someone comes and says, hey, this is a real problem, we hear them out, and we go from there.
I'm gonna say Charlie Campbell.
So.
Strike that part.
Henpecking this will take, well, but then, we, we don't want, we don't want 8 and 100 square feet either. You know, so.
Well, Great Clips had, what, 6 or 7.
Yeah, but that's a different district.
Out there, you know, and they're all busy, you know, like that. And I think that's how they make, that's one way they make their money, is being able to accommodate more at one time. And I don't think 3, I think 3 is too restrictive. I'm not saying to make it 10, but I don't think, I think 3 is too restrictive, I guess.
Bob and I don't have opinion, we don't go to.
Barber shops.
I like, I like my barber.
Oh.
I ain't going there.
Any other comments on this? Okay, this, tonight was just a date of introduction, so. Okay, uh, moving to other business, um, does anyone in council have any other business tonight? Hearing none, what?
Sorry. I'll get, I'll get in trouble from Sarah Wallace.
Yes, good meetings.
We always like to be on Sarah Wallace's good side. And she's, to be fair, has done a tremendous, uh, amount for the county. I'm seriously plugging her at this moment, because her stepping into the role, uh, to kinda carry the burden on her back and say, we need to get together a framework plan with Licking County, kudos to her. They hired, obviously, Planning Next to do that. We have a deliverable copy. Um, you all have been invited to some of those meetings for the release of that. I know your schedules are busy, hopefully you've had the opportunity. But, uh, as I mentioned last time, in the near future, we'll be looking to pass a resolution. Uh, just, just stating that we, we like what's in here. Once again, it's not a binding. You do not have to take every single piece of this and implement it. All they're asking you to do is consider the things that are in here. Uh, this had input from everyone in the county, and I'd like to say it's, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good document. There was, there was a lot of good questions that were asked, uh, a lot of real questions, uh, about development in the county, what that's going to look like, what that's going to impact the school district. The school district took a, a part in this and gave their opinions. And, uh, I can tell you that in one of the meetings, they highlighted Johnstown as being probably the most accurate, uh, with their predictions. Uh, so kudos to their team for bringing, uh, for bringing some good, real data that they could really sink their teeth into. So this is something that's going to be coming through to you probably in the near future. But, uh, I have one copy, I can get more probably, uh, but I can leave it up here at the city offices. Uh, feel free to look through it. I think Ryan Green is, is in here a couple times, uh, for some of the meetings. There's been participation.
I tried to go.
Good participation. I don't know if it was me pressuring them or not, but on the very front cover, we have three of the pictures are of Johnstown. So the old horseshoe, the Monroe Township Fire Station, and, uh, the trailhead that exists there. And I'm not too certain that that's not a blue house that exists in Johnstown. And that green tractor on there very well could be one of ours as well, so.
Awesome.
We got it.
Anything else for other business?
No, that's it.
Um, I have, I have one item I would like to say to the crowd and to people listening. If you get an email from me, and it is asking for any money, anything, please report to the city. We've had two instances now where someone is spamming my account, um, and is asking citizens or employees for money. So please, look at the name or look at the email address. I don't wanna see anybody, um, hurt. I, I don't send emails asking for money.
But if you would like to send money to Johnstown, you can call our office.
So the gift cards I have, do you remember?
Getting from me, I send it.
So to be clear, and I, I wanna make sure, it's not that Donnie's account has been.
It's not hacked, it's someone spoofing me.
It's, it's an account that's set up very similar to look like the mayor's account. So it's not that his system has been compromised by any means. It's someone that obviously is.
Someone impersonating me.
This happens in every city.
Well, because you're public information, and I'll second that. I will never send an email to anyone asking for any type of funding for anything. So if you get one from my name, also not real.
Bob, can I have some?
No.
So I just, I just don't wanna see anybody in town get hurt. I, I know that it happens all around the world, um, these things. So I just wanted to give a warning to everybody, so. No other information tonight?
Fireworks Friday night.
Yep, fireworks Friday night.
Northridge fireworks after football game.
If you'd like to help clean up, we're starting at 7:30 on Saturday morning, clean up, so. I would like to make a motion now that we move to executive session to discuss confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance to include all members of council, the city manager, um, the school board president, um, school board member, and the superintendent of the school.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.[1763.85]